All right, good evening. We will go ahead and get this meeting called to order with roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Okay, if y'all will join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With our mission statement being preparing each student for successful and meaningful life, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Onto consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Public comments?
Brett Benneke has signed up to speak.
Mr. Benneke. And just a reminder that we, when we have someone come speak, we're just here to listen. We don't necessarily respond back at this point. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
Thank you guys for allowing us some time this week. Um, in a time where almost every decision feels incorrect, we would say it's still much. I want to take a little bit of time to analyze the process and target that objective. But we've developed a new plan. Uh, we currently have a hard work of creativity. Teachers, the administrators, we put so much into the plans that you have for the recording. Fragmented results, impressive deals with problems. But they aren't the plan we started off with. And that's because today we don't face the problems of expanding the person. In a month from now, we're not going to have to see the problem. In this, in this month, the teachers have done a great job adjusting based on the new information. And as I can only learn from them. And we simple things. Old person, old version, we learned that the decision we made yesterday was never quite right. The decision we made today. We could keep that. From the start, the first class were our preference. The teachers could better build relationships with students and make this agreement with the students and staff. Our plans had evolved to match reality. But if we're going to do that, we'll flex that way. And we hope to do the best and realize the need to plan for the worst. The result is a very living sense of community. And I hope that they will be embraced by the board and by the community of our students. Next year, I ask you all to play your strengths. We're a board that has been for years quite literally celebrated and winning. We are really looking at wraps by choose their sets. And then turn that expertise into age of decision making, into accurate and reasonable judgment. That will require a day that I can play that. By all means, today, embrace the plan for the board. But please recognize that this might not be the finish line, but the immediate leader at this point between community, families, teachers, students. For that reason, I do have one suggestion for your pondering to walk away from meetings. I would ask you to please implement, for Justin, to start a schedule a little bit further in the past. Now, I know that there's already so much chaos and change. Adding one more thing to the gym seems like just progressive. But, as I said before, the decisions we made yesterday often weren't directly decisions we made. That might have lead to calendar decisions we set. Every teacher in this district wants more for the students than any of us are in position to provide to them. To extend even this for over day might make all the difference in the world. If we just keep in the spring and a lot of the struggles and failures we face every day and having something to be cool with about. An education that we know that is deserved. So it is through all this planning and the thoughts we need to teach it. These people are very open minded about being self the teachers. And that's the position to provide the students, the education, and we know that we want like the mission's sake of the government to respect. And please.
Thank you, Mr. Benneke. All right, on to the school reentry update. Dr. Sligle.
Gladly. Board, thank you for this opportunity to bring you up to speed on where we're at currently with our school reopening and reentry planning. I thank the members of the audience for tonight, their attendance, and for, I think, the grace and patience that will be needed as we move forward in this process. Uh, next slide, please. Michelle's our actual slide advancer tonight, so. Quite frankly, our, our purpose this evening is simple. We want to give you an honest assessment of where we are currently at, the work that's been done to this point, uh, the struggles that we are facing, and some of the hurdles that we have yet to climb. And, um, we promised you early on, and I promised you that when we started this professional venture together, that we would always share with each other the truth as we move forward. And so you're going to hear some, um, the truth as we see it tonight is, and some of the things that we continue to, to struggle with. Two things that I have, um, shared with our community on numerous occasions, as well as staff on ad nauseam, they're probably tired of hearing, uh, hearing me talk about it, is the need for us to plan and adjust. As Mr. Benneke said, um, we started a planning process several months ago, and there's new information every day. And so the adjustments that are necessary as we move forward in this, um, we just are trying to make the best of the new information that we have as we move forward. And patience and grace. This is a new experience for all of us. Uh, we all desperately want, I think, a hundred percent agreement on this if we were to survey teachers, the best place for kids is in the classroom. We all know that, and that's what we desperately want. However, there's this externality right now that prevents that from happening, and that's what we're trying to navigate through. So patience and grace as we try to figure this out together. The reentry plan, uh, we've attempted to keep the board informed every step of the way, uh, every time that we've had, uh, a question or a struggle, uh, some, uh, small little accomplishments as well along the way, but we trying to keep you informed every step along the way. We've worked with the team of teachers, uh, parents, leaderships in the buildings and, and ASC in developing the plan. And we've also looked at guidance from the several agencies, specifically the Cass County Health Department, two documents, and it feels like everyone's coming out with a guidance document these days. Uh, but documents that we've really sunk our teeth into is ones are the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control. Just recently, a, a quality document came out from the Harvard School of Public Health that we're also making use of, and then DESI, as well as the Mary Ziri Center for Public Health Excellence. So there's been a variety of decision points that we've had to make as we got to this point, and we've looked through guidance to, from several of, uh, medical professionals, health professionals, as well as our own Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to come to this point together. Next slide, please. So, to recap, a reentry plan was sent to parents on July the 10th. Uh, several emails and RP updates have followed since. That, uh, plan was built around two objectives that we started, and we started planning for this moment back in late May. And, uh, our objectives at that point was to provide an in-person learning experience for as many students and parents who wanted it for as long as we could, providing a reasonable risk reduction strategy for all. And the other piece, because we knew that, that parents would want, students would want a choice in all this, we wanted to provide a rigorous and relevant virtual instructional experience for those, uh, parents and students who wanted that experience. So staff teams started, uh, way back in late May, trying to put a plan together that met those two objectives, and we knew we had a parental choice component that would be one of the first forks in the road, one of the first decision points in the road, because part of that plan was a multi-tiered process. The original idea back in May, when we started to come out of our cocoons and the overall numbers were looking pretty positive, was that we felt we could go to school in a five-day experience K through 12, or pre-K through 12, as well as offer choice for those parents who wanted a, a virtual experience. That first decision point, we knew as we saw the data come in, we worked with the teachers' group and really were, uh, were, uh, pushed in an area that we didn't anticipate that we might have to go to for a solution, and so we looked at a grade six through 12 alternative schedule. So that's the first decision point. The past seven or eight days, Dr. Volker, we've had registration going on. Dr. Volker's going to come and give you some registration numbers about where we're at currently with, uh, with the choice between, uh, the in-person experience and the virtual experience, and then talk a little bit about what that means as we move to a grade six through 12 A B schedule.
Well, good evening, everybody. Um, as you can see by our numbers, as Dr. Sligle was speaking, we really thought it was very important that we provide parents and our community a choice, that they feel comfortable with our in-person instruction. So we got to work on our virtual options, the virtual construction of RAPAC, and we completed the enrollment process of all of them. We did the enrollment process. And looking, I'd like to highlight a couple of numbers. When you look down at the tool, if you find our instruction, you'll come up with the bottom of the row, you'll see that's 1,205. That is the number of students that have registered for whole virtual online instruction. That is 22% of students that have enrolled so far. That's a pretty large number. If you are pleased that that of your parents trust us in that virtual environment, it wouldn't be very hard to live up to that. So we'll talk about that a little bit, but that's a solid number. Um, we still have 78% of those that chose to go with us K-12, pre-K-12 in-person. You can see the different schools and the breakdowns that we listed up there, but not really the total, you know, that we won't highlight first. Just some components and pieces I thought you'd be interested in regarding our virtual instruction. We have already worked with and notified our 41 full-time teachers from our classroom environments to move and work in our virtual environment, and as many part-time. So we are quite a few teachers that we are going to work with in the training component. Um, I do want to thank Dr. Hatfield, Dr. Kaufman, Dr. Ward, because they have just done an incredible amount of work to set up, to organize, to understand, and communicate with our staff, to write and look at instructional for their most liked, ask for those that would be willing to participate, uh, go through that process and notify them as we, as we can show. So that has been amazing, entertaining, and those individuals were incredible. A lot of the work we've done in this situation is incredible as well. Looking at that, I also want to let you know that we started with those staff members for the two weeks, what we're calling a virtual boot camp. So that has been designed. It is two full weeks, eight hours a day. It's a lot of work, um, but I'm excited to have that complete, ready to go for those staff, starting next Monday, so you can have that. How much they've come in, Rick, and Jason Walsh, the whole committee, we need others. They've done a lot to put that together. Um, looking at, we're also, I'm going to thank, that we got all of the stuff, doctors and all those, because we're looking at space to house those teachers, um, and recording. So for example, in a virtual environment, you might not have tablets, you don't have that classroom space, but you need a lot of recording space, and you love work space. So we're designing and developing that so our teachers can go in there and create those virtual lessons, upload them in the learning system, and have them ready for our kids to do as soon as school begins. So we're excited about that, and thank you a long later. We've already had local Canvas, LMS training, so that's all been done. We still have plenty of work to do. Um, we're looking, we're working out the modules as we build it up for our morning across the semester, focus on observer standards, and we're learning that. And we're still going to need and look at to provide every support, counselor support in the health sector for all of us. So the lot that goes into it, obviously, there's no path, but we're really far along. You think that choice, you can see by the number that enroll, that choice is very important.
Will they be able to have specials?
Yes, there will be specials for both of it. It'll look different at every level. And it really, my choice by number is different as well. And you're, are you on that side?
Just saying, South Middle School's listed twice. I think East Middle School might be off there, so I'm not wish.
East Middle School is the first.
Okay, perfect.
I pitched that on my document, but I apologize. I think the staff have probably uploaded the others. Uh, I noticed that, yes, uh, the top South Middle School, you see it, it's enrollment at 915, but not that many kids itself. So I promise, that one is, apologize for that. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to the next component, if you'd like. So as part of our planning, and there has been a lot of planning, and Mr. Benneke is absolutely correct, we have to get new information every day, and we're ready to adjust and pivot, and I think he was absolutely correct, and we're, we're all going to be able to take information again on a constant basis. So as a part of that, um, looking at our numbers and the space requirement for our larger students, if you've ever walked into a classroom and a 30, 17-year-old, you know what I'm talking about, um, so we look at how to limit that at the sixth through 12. So why would we do that? Smaller class size allows greater distance in, and the classrooms are smaller, with fewer students in those situations that might be exposed, um, might be quarantine, might be student home, a smaller environment, that you might need to say, okay, we're going to have to quarantine in this situation, we need to keep more going, um, actually in the process. So what are we looking with that? Basically creating two groups, plus a sixth, 12. So for example, Group A would be in-person Monday and Wednesday, uh, Tuesday and Thursday would be virtual instruction. We're really working with other teachers, and we've worked really hard on professional development, when all our staff get back to what does that look like in instructional, capability to that, what's best practice, and how do you weigh that out in a lesson plan that makes sense? Well, at the same time, knowing that you're going to construct first and then have activities and lessons ready for the virtual body of your next step, we'll see. So we've got in-person Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, and Thursday, um, and then Group B is going to be Tuesday and Thursday, in-person with Monday and Wednesday virtual. Looking at all students on Friday doing virtual, we're really looking for some collaboration and some intervention and support to be able to develop our planning, to be, that's really important, we want to be able to design that, develop that, that's right. So how would we do that? We got a lot of discussion on how to divide those groups. If everybody has been in, regarding that, it's been great to listen to those, um, because even based on peer groups or friends, I think, what we found that might be most equitable, that life doesn't always feeling, um, is you're regularly assigned, you're assigned a family group, um, number of seconds. That family group number takes into account, so if you use last names, for example, you might have a given family, well, only one home, three different last names. And that way, you have to go back and pitch all of those and put them on the same day, in one just in house or room in the same day. So the family group number actually allows you to be able to have a different. So you can use Steven and Todd, um, that way kids honestly, if they couldn't know if friend's last name is in a different part of the alphabet, you still might be going on that same day with them, because it depends on family group. So that's the information we absolutely, we have to explain to our community, tell them what we're talking about, why we did it, and then there would be notification that you're in Group A or you're in Group B. So I spoke fast. They're using that, but anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, on a typical non-COVID day, do kids have all seven classes all on one day? They don't have some of them on Monday and some of them on Tuesday?
Correct.
They've done that in the past, but.
All Monday, if you have all your seven.
I just didn't want somebody to go to school on Monday on, like, their black day and then not have that class again for, you know, the next week.
No, no, that is a good question. Thanks.
But at the, uh, at the middle school, don't they switch?
Well, we're looking at redesign, restructuring the lives.
Okay.
Most, you know, we have to look at.
Okay.
Um, a common question I know that we all get is on the elementary spacing in the classrooms.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're looking at a little bit different guidance regarding our smaller students and looking at, Dr. Pettenfield was actually working today, measuring and designing and structuring classrooms so we can see how to add to the space. We're going to have to make some tough decisions, though. We really are. We're going to have to look at what's currently in our elementary classrooms. So we might be able to have 20 students, see, um, with distance in an elementary classroom, but not with the amount of material that we currently have in. But we're going to have to have conversations with our staff. We're going to have to look, that's why Dr. Hatfield is putting together those guidelines, looking at other drawings and structures that actually measure classrooms, and that for, um, we're all learning, so it's kind of what we're up to.
Yeah, I'd like to add, uh, for the boards aware of the evolution of how we got to a six, 12 A B split, and it's not a pre-K-12 A B split. When we started talking about this back in May and June, the overwhelming desire was to get back into as much of a normal situation as possible. When we started then taking a look and, and, and really being challenged by, okay, at the six, 12 level, you have a lot more mobility of students during the day. So if you have a positive case, that student is walking down hallways, visiting classes, and changing classrooms up to seven times a day. When you take a look at the elementary space, there's a lot more self-contained, so you are basically, uh, within a, a, a pod type of area, a, a classroom area, that you really don't interact as much as, 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 as it is. And so taking a look at that and thinking about the, where the need was to cut back on the number of kids in the school, at the same time trying to preserve the overwhelming desire to try to keep something as normal as possible, especially for our littles, led us to go to a six, 12 A B split as opposed to a pre-K-12 A B split.
Uh, on Fridays, do teachers still report to the buildings?
Yes, that is the current plan.
Okay.
Yes, our next slide, uh, Dr. Pettenfield's going to talk about some of our other potential alternatives, uh, and as he'll stress, this is not a sequential list. It's not one, two, and three. It's, these are the other tools in our toolbox that may be used. So, Dr. Pettenfield.
Absolutely. Uh, we want to, we've got a lot of people, a lot of different tools, rather than articles that are out there, um, a lot of our patrons and staff have shared their opinions with us, um, great opinions. And so we want to make sure whenever they say, well, they taught us that, or they taught us that, we have. But here's some of them that are, we're looking at. Because if we can get, the more base time we can give our kids and our teachers, the better it is. We want to make sure we can do that. So again, these aren't any order, but we need parents and our patrons and our staff to understand that just because if we have a flare-up or a few students or staff were to get, uh, that's possible, doesn't necessarily mean that we could shut down the building, or that we need to shut down a building. Especially at our year level, we are able to contact rates and keep everyone in the small families, so that we may potentially be able to keep most of them in that house. So we've got confirmation from Cass County Health Department that they will be providing a very strong directive on when and how big we have to close and if, um, unfortunately we would have to do that. So we want to make sure that it's not an all-in-one situation. You do have contingencies, uh, at different levels of the mountain. One of those contingencies, and I think, when this, this, in May, this was on the table more so than it is now, for the 22 week, uh, probation, it allows us to have a better opportunity to stay. But one of those contingencies, we need to, about this, we have to spread out, especially in our K-5. We didn't actually look at a situation where we might go six, 12 online and go and keep in our K-5 and move forward and fit rate to their respective levels. And I know that that's going to involve a lot of anxiety, because that's not something we're planning on doing, it's one of the, you know, we are, considering all options. That would be a potential contingency plan if we needed to purge, spread out our building. So, um, that's one of the options, and then obviously, our patrons need to be prepared for, for praying this doesn't happen, that for some reason we need to go fully, um, to virtual district-wide. Again, like, we listen, what this would look like in the last spring, which is a much more organized last spring, you had one week to figure out, and now we've been working there since then, our department, um, to get prepared, make sure that we can operate high quality of, um, all of this. Glad to hear any questions on that.
Thank you. Again, these plans have been shared with you, uh, several times to get, as we got to this point. Again, not sequential, but looking at possibilities that we may need to, uh, try to keep ourselves in school as long as possible. Dr. Hatfield, uh, has been working on the staff side of things, and she has been working overtime lately, so on this, so I'll turn her view.
Do you remember three years ago or so, we did this, like, district re-configuration thing? I'm glad we do that here in the day. I'm sorry, I'm not going to tell you. I never thought I could say that, but it's true. So a couple of weeks ago, we did some staff survey out, um, asking, um, staff about their comfort level in returning, what concerns they have. So I just wanted to give you a summary of some of these results, and give you some ideas of how we're addressing or attempting to address some of these concerns. So first of all, we had great, um, participation in the survey. Over 500, well, actually, exactly 500, it was 499 yesterday, but 500 staff members responded to our survey, and about 60% of those were teaching staff, and the others were just a wide variety of our employees across the district. But the way that broke down, there were four options. One being that, um, the individual had no concerns about returning to in-person school in August, and that was about 15% of the respondents. 77% said that they had some sort of concerns that they were planning to return. 8% some concerns and would rather not return, and they were directed to contact me for discussion. And then 0.5% said they had significant concerns and they wouldn't be returned. So I started to get a few emails about what those concerns were, and to kind of do some problem solving. And the 8% that said they would rather not return, it wasn't that they weren't going to, they just wanted to share their opinion, or what they felt was that the district should just be virtual and not return in person at all. So it wasn't necessarily that they were individually planning for themselves not to return, it was they just thought we should make a choice so no one had to. So we worked, we worked through those conversations. And then there was some comment, I've never had, like, so many comments on the survey before. And these were some of the, um, more frequent, um, comments that occurred. The first one was about what happens if I get COVID or my child gets COVID and I have to be off of work? Um, will I, will I be paid? Will I have to use all IPTO? The answer to that is, you have some emergency family medical leave that came with the Family Cares Act that hit late March or early April. And because we were out of school, I think a lot of people didn't, like, tune in to that part of my communications, because it didn't really affect them at the time. But what that allows school is 10 days of paid sick leave if you have a direct exposure, or if you are having to quarantine because you're caring for someone with a direct exposure or a positive case. So yes, there are, there is additional leave, additional PTO that our staff are already given. We also have staff with significant bank leave, and that is always available, and we will, we will be as open and flexible as we can with leave requests this year in lieu of all of this. But there is some additional leave. That same act also allows, um, for some paid leave if our childcare facilitation closes. So if you have a small child, they're concerned that their daycare closes, or their whole daycare does, um, the act provides that you would go 10 days without pay from the district unless you have paid leave. And then after that, you're entitled 12 weeks of pay at two-thirds of your rate for, essentially as an extended M L A time. So quite generous leave, um, we've had several staff that have used the paid leave because of exposure to COVID or a concern with that. Um, and a couple of folks, when we returned in May, actually used the daycare part of that, because they're, they, it's time for them to come back to work, folks in my central office, but their daycare is what that would be. So that is being addressed, and that, I don't want people to worry, there's, there's leave out there if they need it. We've got the relative substitutes. I feel like I've talked about this for years. Um, we know that substitutes work really easy, we did a whole of last year, so I've worked, I've sent a survey to those employees to see who's coming back. Um, it's really, the percentage of those not returning isn't any more than a normal year. We tend to lose some because some become teachers or they move away or they get a full-time job. One thing we are doing, and it's posted on our website, is we are hiring a permanent building sub for all of our buildings for at least the first semester of the school year. That individual is dedicated to the building, will be there to fill in for the last-minute needs, um, as we know that the positions that are hardest to fill are those that are called in late at night, early in the morning, or that arise once the school day has already started. So then we will have somebody in the building that is, um, dedicated to that. But then also, if there would be a need for a substitute that day, the individual could help provide breaks for teachers because of lunch duties and things like that, so just an extra set of hands. Um, the third item, and as far as the availability of staff in general, we are, we're following our enrollment process, we're recruiting, we're interviewing, we're going to try to get some folks on board, just as we do every year for that. And there's also, um, a new, I haven't heard lately where the state is not with this, but typically to get a substitute certificate, you have to sit through college hours. I sent. I sent on a committee this last spring to change those requirements. And we would allow someone to become a substitute teacher and get a certificate if they completed a twenty-five hour training course, which was all, it was an online training course. I haven't heard from Mr. Katnick down at Desi where they're at with that, but hopefully it's pretty close to being a reality, which, it will be at fairly inexpensive cost to the substitute to do that. Time for teacher breaks. We know that as we embark on this year, we're going to do our best to keep students in single places in the building. But that's going to look like our cafeterias are not used. Our teachers were a very long time, in fact, this is year twenty-six for me. I don't believe I ever had a year when I didn't have a duty-free lunch almost every day. That's going to look a little bit different because kids are going to be eating in classrooms because of the large gathering space in the cafeteria, it just doesn't make sense. So we are working on ways in which we can relieve teachers during that time. Of course, we know if you don't have a lunch break at your planned period, it's late in the day, that takes for a really long day. We will find a way for them to go to the bathroom, I promise. We're doing some things with our student monitors at the elementary schools. They're currently four-hour employees. We're going to up that to five and a half hours to give them more time at the building to help provide assistance with lunch and recess. So again, we're giving some ways that we can give teachers more breaks because we know, we know this is going to be hard on everyone, kids and staff alike. Another concern that was mentioned frequently was the overall compliance with just some of our safety protocols. Specifically, what's going to happen if a student refuses to wear their masks? We, I was, I was really surprised at summer school, the number of kids that came with masks and that have pretty, been pretty successful with wearing masks. That's surprising. I thought it would be more of a challenge. And there will certainly be some challenges with that. We are prepared to share with our administrative team and discuss the strong stance we need to take on items that deal with our protocols because it's for everyone's sake. So that is, that we discussed with our principals that come back next Monday, because summer is officially over in a couple of days. What's the process if there's a confirmed case? Dr. Pettenfield spoke to this just a few moments ago. Don't have an exact answer yet because we are going to follow what the Cass County Health Department directs us to do. So I can't say in situation A, B, and C is going to look the same. We will follow their guidance. One of the things that we talked about in our call is CD charts. My substitutes talked about CD charts a lot, too. They really like them. But the CDC and Cass County Health have told us, CD charts are going to be really important this year because if there is a positive case in a classroom, we're going to have to provide that so they can do that contact tracing. And they've told us that if you wear a mask and I wear a mask at all times, if one of us is positive, the other one is not going to have to order to. We are aware that we have some positive cases in the district. And if we'd been wearing masks like we should have been wearing masks, fewer people would have had to be off of work. So, we are going to comply with masks being more aware of that. Hopefully, it doesn't become too, we do have a issue for staff or students. And then again, Michelle Stem communicated out as we learned the positive cases, we'll take at one case at a time and follow the Cass County Health Department's guidance. Access to water for students, our fountains are closed. We all know what lovely children, those water fountains are. My current husband, he's busy, that's how he got mine, a silver dollar sitting in my water fountain. I'm not sure I would leave that home in seventeen, but, you know, we'll go with it. But our water fountains are closed. No one's using them. How are we going to get water? Who's facing us? There are going to be a lot of green water bottles. We're going to let them fill in their classrooms. Some buildings have the water dispensers, others do not. I'm not sure if we are even working to get others, but we can be sure that kids have water bottles for them. And all times. And ability to physical distance, do good class size. Again, Dr. Pettenfield spoke to this, he drew a really nice map that I took and looked at before I came over this evening. We are also going to explore using different spaces in our buildings. We know that this year is going to look different. Kids are not going to music class. They're not going to be going to the library or art or the cafeteria. Those are larger spaces that can become classrooms. I know it seems very odd to set up your classroom in the cafeteria, but it does allow for a much larger space to spread kids apart. So if we have classrooms that are on a tagged and larger side, we're going to consider the movement of those classrooms into other areas of the building. Our kindergarten classrooms are also larger classrooms. Some buildings aren't going to have their kindergarten classroom built with kindergarten. Maybe a bit of a pre-classroom goes down and it becomes part of, part of the kindergarten wing. But we're going to use our space to the best of our ability. Students and staff mental health, of course, an ongoing concern. We know that this is, this is taxing on everyone it's wearing. And we, we've got some things started to put in place to look at that as well and try to continue to provide support. And then the last item was a fairly consistent concern, and time to prepare for virtual learning if it becomes necessary. We know that this spring, we dealt with what we had and did the best we could. The staff have been very clear that they would like some time to ensure that we have to go virtual again. There's kind of a good parallel for that. I don't think any of us disagree with the desire to do that. Just briefly, Dr. Volker sent out a survey more recently to the staff of school opening week that asked staff, what materials do you need in terms of safety and curricular supplies? Many things that you would expect to hear, of course, all of the cleaning supplies. We have, Dr. Pettenfield had a lunch chime in, if I can get something, but we have created a list of minimum, the minimum items that we are going to provide to teachers and staff. Two masks, a box of gloves, a nice box of towels, and a spray of the disinfectant cleaner that will be kept effectively by the custodial staff in the evenings. And sanitizer in the classroom, again, with refillable in the office. And plexiglass barriers. We are currently looking and trying to get some bids to see how we can get that accomplished. We need a lot of them. So, we're going to not plexiglass in the room. I'm not out there right now. Pretty well used out, but Mr. Goff has been working on getting some bids for those for our staff. Student school supplies, they're not going to share this year, so they'll have to need more supplies in the teacher's classroom. Velcro dots, carpets and rugs are not something that can be disinfected with the current clean materials that are available. So the little velcro dots are, tell them where to sit. Dr. Goff tells me that's a thing. So, we know they've been asking for those, and then there's some other items there. If you don't know what a fidget is, that's something that an adult or child has in their hands that helps keep their hands busy so their mind can focus. What questions can I answer? Or what, is there anything else that, I know that was a lot of materials, sorry, just talking about it, it's, you know, a hundred and so forth.
So with the eight percent you said you talked to, or you request them to come talk to you, of the ones that did, were you able to alleviate concerns? Were you able to communicate a little more effectively with them?
I feel like some of the things you shared have alleviated concerns. That eight percent, I really feel like the only thing that's going to make them feel okay about schools at the church. That's, I don't know that there's anything we can do to help them feel, they're all planning to return the eight percent that replied to that, but they wanted to know that there's concerns and they would rather not return. But they're going to.
So of the, the masks of students and enforcing that, were the, were the teachers concerned that, that they weren't going to get support from their staff? Or just that overall, they're not going to be compliant?
A couple of things. I think it's a management issue. I mean, we manage a lot of things as teachers in the classroom. This is one more thing to supervise and to please. And I also think part of the concern is they might support from their administrators if students were not on our school protocols that had been asked about.
Thank you. Communication is key in all this, and we've tried to make, do a continual communication piece on all of this from the very inception. Michelle Stems has done some great work with both the website and with the written words, so I'm going to have her talk a little bit about the communication planning that's gone on with this.
As you know, each year, we have communication in line in August about variety of routines. So there's some registration and speaking that's in place and bus route. Well, this year, we have a lot of other topics to cover. Well, so starting on July first, we implemented a plan and shared information about the materials. So we, I remember changing some safety protocol and offering them the choice between in-person or in learning. Today, that deadline, parents made that choice. And so now the communication will shift a little bit to focus more on the safety measures, technology assistance, and questions that parents and families have about how that can work. Details about in-person virtual schedules. We're curious to know about the A D E that you're working on tonight. And then other details about schedules. And then update on activities. So we'll have all of our usual back-to-school communication, but then we'll bring it up to include the things that are different this year. As been noted earlier, we'll continue to remind people that the plans might change. There might be some periodic closures or schedule changes. And we'll be relying on guidance from the local and state authorities to do that. And we'll also continue to trust that we're a sustainable, you said, for staff, of people who are long with that. A message from Mike, perhaps you've received most emails. The three emails so far this month, they're a good record, great, like, parents and families. Three messages so far have told parents about the plan that we would have a choice. And then each, some of them, that I shared a little bit more. Those are like a broader stroke view, and then, we have to get to the website, ask more than that, some other types of information. Communication about positive cases, as Dr. Pettenfield mentioned, you've probably already seen that we have an employee test positive. We've shared that with, with the meeting, and we are committed to continuing to do that. We've got an employee test positive, October nineteenth. We've sent an email to staff and families, an additional post-it on the website. As part of that communication, we will indicate whether the need for a schedule change or a schedule closure. So the very first case that we recorded, we shared that we were until May to start with summer school, high school by Monday. The most recent positive cases, we haven't had all the schedules, but we will do that. If a student tests positive, we're also committed to sharing that information. But I want to be sure to let you know that that would only occur if the student is attending school, which is being in school activity. If the student is completely virtual and not on school property, in school activity, we're not going to send out enough data about the student testing. Also, we won't be sending out a communication if you tell me that your neighbor's son is in seventh grade, that's a problem. We have to have that information from the health department. Be sure that we have that accurate information. The health department is going to do that, the contact tracing. There will be instances where we're helping to communicate with the classroom or school or activity to notify people we had close contact. Then if it's a classroom, a grade level, a school, or a team, we'll share if there's cancellation or a schedule change, whether or not we can resolve. We have to balance the line between sharing the information with everyone and also protecting that digital privacy. Students or employees can return to school, or maybe receive some guidelines. And we're going to try to share some more specific information about what that looks like, even with testing, guidance on how long that can be, the rate of change, although we'll have longer.
So, when you, not, not letting people know about the, if somebody did, did test positive on the virtual world, you know, if they're taking virtual classes and you know how the rumor mill gets going, should we maybe communicate that somebody, somebody has a positive test, however, they are not a part of the, the learning environment where they're with other students?
Would you say that, and if a student tested positive or was scared of something?
I get, I get you. Well, I just, I, I, yeah, I can understand that. I'm just saying, trying to control the, the rumor mill. And I know it's difficult, I know it's hard, but the best is being out front, and this is what it is.
That may be something that we need to reconsider. Sometimes, when something happens outside of school, we're still, I don't know, sharing news, but because they're always our students.
Right.
That they're in school now. So, that may be something that we need to consider. That doesn't, I'm a little concerned with how many, oh, I guess we don't really know.
Right. Just thought, just, not that we had to, I just thought.
And do we know yet if, say, if a high schooler tests positive, are we sending this communication out district-wide or just to high school parents?
Well, I have to follow some guidance with the health department on that. We have tended to have the philosophy of sharing a little more broadly than we do. There are some school districts that, saying, we're not, we're not publicized in that aspect of the health department. And we, and what you're, you know, about the rumor mill and the community wanting to know, and a lot of them knowing, perhaps, students, certainly, all that is better if we're still going to share them.
Well, that is a good thought, though, because if they've got younger siblings, maybe in elementary or something, possible.
It's important to note that when we do have a positive case in a situation like that, if we do, and I think the direction is that we would let the community know, part of the communication would also be that the, the Cass County Health Department will be doing the contact tracing. And if there's need for any follow-up, you will be contacted by the Cass County Health Department. So, I don't want people to think just because it occurred in a high school that all of a sudden, that because I have a high school student, I'm immediately at risk. That is where the Cass County Health Department would come in and assist us in that communication notification.
It's challenging, challenging for them, and it is challenging for us, though. I do feel like we want to share the lunch information if we can without violating the system.
What are the parameters for sports teams? You know, like, if one volleyball girl gets it, do the whole, does the whole?
It depends, and that's, that's what we're learning is quite interesting. If they've been practicing, if they've been practicing, they've been wearing masks, certain different systems, if they've been, they may or may not, and that could be, they've been sharing equipment, or if some other students were wearing masks. That's where we would rely on some of the public health that are becoming, that our whole team now, team and coaches, and what does that do?
I mean, do all the cross-country people wear masks while they're running? Or, I mean, is, what?
Well, if they're not socially distanced, so I think you mask, but I think the other part of it.
You got to run fast, right?
My, my daughter, we just got noticed, they're getting their Raypack masks. And so, yes, at least at my daughter's age, they're, the cross-country is all wearing masks right now when they run.
The cross-country team, I have witnessed, this one, they, they practice, actually, come right now. They, the students, you know, they get out of the car, and so a coach comes up and picks them up. And they get out of the car, and then they have to spread out before they go on their run. We've had photos from some of the other practices where the students will have the top, they're, they're spread out, maybe not. A big portion of the people are practicing. But if they're not spread out, the, the, when they're wearing masks, it's a close to the door.
You did a good job with that. That highlights the differences, Paul, that each case will bring to the Cass County Health Department as they do their questions and answers as to figure out what is the level of exposure other students may have had, and then what steps do they need to take to mitigate that?
I'm also relying on some documents from initial, which, there hasn't been a lot of documents yet, but they ranked some of the, the, the higher risk factors that they have in front of us that they're not going to disclose to us, unless you go all the people.
You recall, at our July eighth retreat, we presented you with a communication plan that Michelle has worked so hard on to implement, and we're in the middle of implementing that plan as we, as we speak, so. plan as we speak. So a lot of thought and theming has gone into making sure that we are communicating as best as we can as we are navigating this ever-changing day-by-day situation. One summary slide real quick, and then I want to open it up to you if you have any other questions. Again, thank you for bearing with us during the length of this update. I feel it's obviously critically important that we want to make sure we get all the information in front of you as much as possible. I can't say enough about this team and the planning that has gone on to get us to this point. We will be as ready as we can by August the 24th. I told the team the other day that no matter, we could put us up against any other school district, and no one's going to be more prepared than we will be on August the 24th. And that may still not seem good enough, because there's a lot left to do. But we will be as prepared as we can be for August the 24th. However, there are some key issues that I want the board to be aware of, and some of these issues are unanswerable questions at this point, and really are perplexing questions for us. And that will impact operations, and I want our eyes to be wide open as we go into August the 24th. You've talked, we've talked about the potential lack of substitute teachers. That is a stressor. It's a stressor every year, right, Dr. Hatfield? But we are going to have forty-seven other school districts in the seven county area navigating this at the same time we are, looking for substitute teachers at the same time we are. That pool could become and will become exceedingly thin. I want the board to be aware that we may have the need for periodic school closures, not because of COVID cases, but because of the lack of substitute teachers. That is a real possibility moving to August 24th. There'd be the potential for frequent in-person to distant learning transitions. As we have cases and the health department advises us, there could be days that we may, a classroom, a wing, however they advise us, might be out for a period of time. And so the frequent from in-person to distance learning and back to in-person could happen as we move forward. We need to keep in front of us that risk reduced is not risk elimination, and that there's certain elements that if we come back into a situation where we are putting people together, that the chances for exposure and therefore the need for substitute teachers, the need for distance transitions is there and always will be there. You heard from Dr. Hatfield that we have a majority of staff that have concerns about returning, and I want to keep that in front of you as well, because that is a very real, we, this team is doing an excellent job. The opportunities to meet with teachers to this point has really helped us to clarify what needs to be done, but there are still some significant concerns out there. We also don't know what the outlook for the virus control is in the immediate future. And I'm talking, when I say that, the next zero to six months. When we started putting these plans together back in May, there was a different trajectory on that line. That line is different now. That may need potential schedule adjustments, either as we get into the year or as we get closer to the traditional cold and flu season, November, December, January timeframe. So I just want to keep that in front of you, too, as we continue to plan and adjust. These are some of the adjustments that we're thinking about as we get closer to that timeframe. Cass County Health Department, they have been very good partners in answering our questions and working together. They are terribly understaffed right now with the numbers of cases that they're seeing and the help that they need to help us navigate through this. I will talk a little bit later during the superintendent's comments about a conversation that I had today with the Cass County Commission that may fill in some of that need for us as it relates to contact tracing, but just know that the Cass County Health Department will be our guide and is doing all they can to help us navigate through this. And I think the one thing that we need as a board, as a team, is some metric-based guidelines for closures and returns. And they're sitting in a Greater Kansas City Superintendent's Group this morning. Other school districts are realizing that, too, and so we're going to embark on an effort to work with our health professionals, public health, to create some metrics, some guidance, that will help guide our path as we move forward over the next several months together. So brave new world. It was interesting last spring. We are, again, committed to creating the best teaching and learning environment for our kids, because that is job number one. It just may look differently as we move throughout the school year. So that's our honest assessment. I'd be happy to stand for questions and see what we can help with.
I just wanted to say thank you to everyone on the cabinet, Dr. Slagel, Dr. Pettingill, Dr. Volker, Dr. Hatfield, Michelle Stidham, I mean, Mr. Gooding. I'm sure, I mean, everyone on the staff has worked so hard in pulling all this together in short order. So thank you very much to all of you.
All right. If there's no more questions then. Oh, and we will have a meeting on August 10th to get last-minute updates before August 24th, and that'll be on your calendar soon. So we'll just put that on there, the 10th. All right. Moving on to the 2020-21 Board Committees. That's just a last-minute option for you to say if anything doesn't work for you. Otherwise, that'll be your committee assignments for this upcoming school year. All right. Moving on to action items. The bond financing resolution. Dr. Slagel.
Yes, gladly. Refer to your July 8th retreat discussion that we had. This is an action item coming before the board tonight for resolution authority for bond early payment. We need to do this for three reasons, as we discussed on July the, or July the 8th. We want to stabilize the levy overall. We want to create for future bond capacity, and also there's significant savings to our taxpayers by making this move tonight. So this is an action item this evening. This action item comes before you with a recommendation from administration for approval. Be happy to stand for questions. I will say Joe Kinder's in the audience from Stifle that can answer questions as well.
Any questions? I think we're all happy that it will save the district quite a bit of money.
In a few words.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the resolution providing for the defeasance of certain outstanding reorganized school district number R two of Cass County, Missouri's general obligations building bonds, series 2016 Missouri Direct Deposit Program, and the approving the form of and authorizing the execution and delivery of an escrow deposit agreement in connection therewith?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ashley Jones?
Yes.
Paul Kaufman?
Yes.
Billy King?
Yes.
Bill Lowe?
Yes.
Aaron Hallett?
Yes.
Ruth Johnson?
Yes.
Kim York?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kinder, for being here tonight. We appreciate it. All right. Moving on to the fuel bid. Dr. Pettingill and Mr. Dobson.
Well, I appreciate you coming in. He was actually off today. I tried to tell him not to come in, but he was here. Obviously, the board is aware we got a $15,000 gallon tank at our last terminal, and that's an exciting thing in terms of savings. Just remember to leave the testing together, about 37 cents per gallon savings for the full payment. So, we have to pass a table, can't really decide. So tonight's action item is, who will provide that tank or not in time? So just to reach out with a figure agreement, because our D O C would sell a few to us, which he was marketing over the whole time. So after putting this together, passing those, there was, fuel.
Have we talked to someone to choose them?
Yes, I just, or, there's, you have.
Oh.
Yes, I can provide all our areas of interest.
Oh, okay.
And, 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 so, let me point out, there's a type of onboard dock, is one that we're being, in a, in a, without, reviewing that as rural fuel services, the recommendation is.
So is there a motion to approve the bid from Rural Fuel Services, Inc., to provide fuel to the district under a three-year agreement?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments, questions?
Just good to see all the numerous bids we got. That's good.
Absolutely. It's nice to see we're saving so much, too.
Now, we sell, are, we utilize an employee or 107,000 gallons of diesel. I'm going to, about 25 cents per gallon saved, and I'm letting, all of our A V houses for short up are unleaded now, along with the district fleet, and now K D A to utilize this, so we can, we can, we can organize.
Well, thank you for all that work putting that all together. All right. Did we get a second? Okay. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. And you're still here. The Ford Transit bid. And we're glad you're still here.
Now, I'm trying to reach you, if you can tell about delivering, and, 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 and the, so, that's our, playing a couple of projects this for the summer, to place that in, I agree with the business, from various leaderships, and, Blue Springs Ford, a little bit, I do like that.
Is there a motion to approve the bid for Ford Transit from Blue Springs Ford in the amount of $32,983?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. All right. Now on to setting the tax levy hearing. Dr. Slagel.
Yes, this next item is statutorily required. The section in the statute requires at least one public hearing to be held on the proposed tax rates for the tax levy hearing that is coming up and scheduled. So this is something we do annually at the July meeting, and the, this is an action item and comes recommended for approval from the administration.
Is there a motion to set the tax levy hearing for 6:45 PM on August 27th, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to committee reports. Has anyone met? All right. Moving on to superintendent's report.
My very first superintendent's report. A lot has gone on the first 23 days. But let's start with the celebrations real quickly. We had a great graduation, a great graduation ceremonies, and we're really happy that we were able to share that with officially 369 students that walked across the stage on last Friday and Saturday night. And given the forecast, I think we fared as well as we could with the weather. So very, very thankful. I think that was a well-received celebration. Also a celebration, I think summer school has gone really well, and we're going to have an update for you, either in a weekly update coming up. But the, one of our summer school teachers is back there. It has really gone well as far as learning about the things that we need that's going to transform and help us with the back-to-school on August the 24th. So pleased about how that has gone so far as well. The majority of what I want to talk about is about this staff that I've inherited, this team. I cannot sing the praises enough, watching them over the first 23 days as they have delved in to this problem of how we're going to get back to school and do it right for kids. Just not at the cabinet level, but all levels that have had a hand in putting these plans together and then are operationalizing them as well. The teachers groups we were able to work with, they did a lot of free work on their own trying to put that A V schedule together. Case in point, two nights this week, I know there's been a group of people, because we've run out of time during the day, huddled up till 10 o'clock at night trying to make this work. And they would do it, they'll probably be doing it again next week and the week after, too. They've gone above and beyond. They're wrestling hard with problems, problems they've never had before. Hopefully, problems will never have again, right? But if we do, at least we have navigated them once, and we'll be better prepared the next time. So I just want to let you know that I feel incredibly blessed to come into this, this group, this family, and see the expertise and the can-do spirit that is going to help us through navigating this problem that we have before. So thank you, staff, team. Appreciate it. And I'll probably owe you all lunch or more at some point in this, as we, as we put the, close the books on this. So that's my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Board of Education comments.
I'd just like to thank everybody for all the hard work they've put in and, you know, I know there's a lot of time and effort and things that go on behind closed doors that we don't even see. And, you know, I'm proud to be a part of this district and just thank you for all your hard work.
Yeah, I echo Paul's comments. I mean, just the staff and their vision and the forecasting that they've had to do is tremendous. You put us in a great position moving forward. I do want to say for our, you know, we talk a lot about who's on the front lines of this, and, you know, it goes without saying, the first responders, the nurses, the doctors have been on the front lines of this, but our teachers are on the front lines of this now. And I think we need to recognize that, and I think we do, as a district, recognize that, because we've, the staff, I feel, has taken tremendous amount of precautions in that respect, and with that in mind, not just with our staff, but our students. And having a student in the district, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the hard work that the staff has done, because it's, it's, it doesn't, doesn't go unnoticed, but, you know, sometimes it's not, it's not the positive comments that hit you, it's the negative ones, but there's, there's a lot more positive comments out there that, of the work you do.
And we all echo those sentiments. Thank you very much for all you guys do. All right. On to calendar of events.